Sounds kind of good.
Yeah, and no match. My God, though.
No match?
I'll open up this planning board here to Lieutenant Maynard. The date is Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty, time is seven oh four P M. We're holding this meeting as a hybrid format, both here in person and virtually on Zoom call. I see we have a couple of guests tonight, and I'm familiar with our guests tonight, so I won't preamble any further. Let's um, let's turn, how about we take our minutes first? Is that okay?
Yeah. I'm over the next.
A second.
I got it. Um. Second page, second paragraph. Then, Crenshaw asked for clarification on current concept plan. It was really asked which of the three concept plans in the package is the one the working group used?
Okay, so. Which?
Which of the three concept plans in the pack is the one the working group used?
Is working group used, okay?
Then. Bottom of page two, going top of page three. Select Board members comment. She was. Says she questioned the density of traffic from the marijuana delivery business from there was proposed to present day. He was really saying. You know, when we first talked about traffic, it was just the marijuana business, and now there's more traffic because of the mixed use. So. Let's just be clarified a little better there.
So.
I understand the way it's written now.
Sorry, location or under?
I I do question the the density of traffic from what was first proposed.
From the initial.
For the marijuana delivery business to present day. Right, excuse. What's my name?
Business. To current proposal. Mixed use, proposal makes use. Okay.
And the only other one. Question of the board, maybe I didn't remember right on page four. Item four, the first paragraph talking about body art. I thought the direction was a little more specific, didn't we? Was the direction to make the changes and submit it? Um. Chris, he didn't like post stuff, but I thought I thought there was more action. It was.
I mean, we we developed rough guidelines on how to approach this, and Bill was going to draft, and then he was going to draft.
Right.
What those, what those thoughts were. Yes, which will do, I mean, we could lose.
Okay, so, all right, so it wasn't like the third one where we said, oh, you're gonna make the change and submit it.
That's correct.
Well, the first one, okay.
Yeah, we we weren't in review of this. We were planning to review it further because. Health Department, and I found health department stuff, Bob and Bill were gonna work on. Some way which has consisted of state motivation.
Okay.
I stopped, which I assume we're here, well, they were just keep doing. Yes.
All right, so no comment.
Okay, so those two, those two amendments, Phil? We on yet?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Oh, I don't think there was a question.
Oh, different Liz, sorry. Sorry.
No, not yet. Okay, I got your, I have your amendments, the two that Bill had.
So, depending questions to. Where that's pressing?
Yes.
What are the big questions to do that?
I will second that. I have one that is wrong. Because I'm page three. That paragraph, that two, three, four, five, starts off, or some, 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 chairs, one, against pairs. So. So, do you see this, the the sentence in that regard?
Yes.
Right there. I also made a set, another comment before that. Which was. That the development agreement. That I found it useful, the development agreement was useful. To highlight the ways that this developer would be successful.
Highlight.
I know it kind of inside that was the previous sentence. But I was trying to make it clear that. I I was trying to get on, make it very clear that the D A. Thought was written. To make the development successful, to show them. So, I think that's the language. So, guys, specifically for the. Can read a sentence references the end. Can I? Just. Okay, so in three additions, I thought. Okay. And you. That's. Take a vote. On good by him. Five zero. That is, as the change. Yep. Move on to end, do discussions of the development group or the proposed. Those messages don't locate at two thousand and eleven. First. First, I wanted to just discuss amongst the board. And I I know some of us have much more extensive histories and experiences than I. My experience with development agreements through the planning board with the town and Maynard. Has been in general that we worked on those D As. As special permit application is progressing through the hearing process. This particular one was developed. So that it would be worked in conjunction with the host community agreement. And that was something that the select board wanted. And we did, what what my perspective was to try to help that out as best I could. So. This one's, from my point of view, is a little different, meaning that we have a D A in front of us. Prior to an application being submitted. And I just wanted to discuss amongst the board, particularly from everyone's experiences with this, to see. When's, when's, when's the right sort of general time, not specifically to this one, but when in general. Should we be? Discussing and working and signing. Like the D A of this type of picture. So I only have experiences with a few of these in town, on a planning board step.
Well.
It's my first question.
I think, I mean, I think it makes sense, but generally, it's sort of concurrent, right, with the special permit, because then we can see the language of the D A. As well as the specifics of the concept plan and the application. However, I understand why the applicant need for the host community agreement, so I think that that's why it's being done specifically for this one. Um. We kind of have a problem personally.
I I'm I'm saying it, it needs to be done during a special permit, because. I mean, one of the useful nature of these things is the tie up. Who sends it really can't be tied up in a special permit condition or better than the egg, so. There's always things that need to be rolled into it, or we'd be better to roll, but there's more flexibility for future changes. That special permit does, and. Just the fact that. Um, you know, stuff changes in the special permit, and trying to guess what it would look like at the end now. Doesn't seem right, then. I'm a little concerned, you know, if you do it too early and you sign it too early, you're actually. Promising and committing the things that might not be in the best interest of the town. Later down the road.
Through the chair, if I may.
Um, I just want to take a few more comments from the board, Elizabeth, if that's okay. But I I do want to turn it over to you in a minute. So, thank you. Jim, what are any thoughts?
Well. I think we're putting the car way before the pause here, I I do believe that, I think, Phil. Made clear that we have to, we should. Had a public hearing, have comments from the, from the above, from all the people. And before we are clear and and ready to sign for the project, will be the time to. To sign that, I think we're doing it twice.
That's fun.
So. Ordinarily, there's no doubt. That you don't want to do the development agreement before you see the application coming. And that way you can work on the applications with the applicants, and help to the project. But in this context. Um, we're dealing with a, really, a new, a new situation. In that, you know, the select board is interested in the host community agreement. They find to tie in both developments together to ensure that. If. They sign on to the. Marijuana delivery business, that the rest of the development will be bound to go forward to. So if there was another way to do that, you know, to have that kind of agreement. You know, without the. Paying board necessarily having to sign on to a development agreement, I'd be supported with that. What I heard from the town council was that what we're doing. By signing the development agreement earlier is lawful. So, okay, that's, it's where a a route is allowable, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other options that we could use. So if there are other options, I'd like to roll the pay off.
Liz, I'm I'm just trying to be really thoughtful about this. And so I think if you, if you, did you were able to hear those comments in general? I'm I'm just, to me, the challenge is, you know, we have host, the H C A, the goals from the select board. And. We, in the past, we found very useful to work on the development agreements while we're in special permit process. And, you know, my board ten, my board has some opinion that it's a little cart before the horse here, and there's some challenges with that. But I'm just trying to see how we can be thoughtful, and if there's any sort of other. I'm just, I'm, I know I'm talking around it, but what what's, what's your thoughts on this, knowing the way we're looking at it?
So, in speaking to the Assistant Town Administrator, it's my understanding that the prior development agreements that were reviewed by the board were distinguishable from the current development agreement. The requirement of the bylaw is that the development agreement is approved prior to the issuance of a special permit. I understood and heard your your concerns regarding parking, and. So we've taken that out of the development agreement to address that, that request. Um, so that will be left to the planning board entirely. Anything to do with parking and requirements of parking. Also, we've taken, we've added language that says if there are restrictions placed on. The project as part of the planning board review. That are more restricted than the development agreement, the development agreement will be automatically amended to include those agreement, uh, requirements without further. Revision. So. I think with those two changes, the concerns that I've heard have been addressed. As far as requiring a public hearing. I think that the bylaw, which requires the development agreement to be approved first. Was approved at town meeting, and so it's allowed, it's lawful. And not only that, any restrictions that the board places on the development agreement. Or on the project that's resulting from the development agreement are going to be more restrictive, not less restrictive, and so those will be heard in a public hearing, and you can take. Comments and apply them to the project in the special permit process. So. I don't know. Where the concerns are, are other than those issues. But if you have any other additional concerns, I I can certainly try to address them.
Let's take this one at a time. So. If we were to sign this, the D A as it stands. It sounds that we still would have the ability to go through the special permit process, review the project. And add any other conditions that we would typically add to a D A?
Yes. Well, not to a D A, to to a, as a requirement of the special permit. So any conditions that are within your jurisdiction of, of part of the special permit review process, you can still implement. You can still hold the public hearing and apply those conditions to the project.
Do we still have the same level of flexibility and authority to add conditions to a project that then would result in amendments to the D A?
So that's, that's how, what I addressed within the development agreement by adding the language under amendments and revisions. That says if there are more restrictive requirements placed on the project as a result of the permitting. Either through conservation or the planning board. Those will automatically become part of the development agreement without further revision, they're incorporated.
Uh, Phil or Liz, can you just point out what section that is of the D A?
Yeah.
That it is.
So I added that language, and it should be in red line in your material. Under twenty seven, permit modifications, this agreement may be modified. In accordance with any conditions of any required permits that are more restrictive than the agreement itself, without further written modification of the development agreement.
Can I ask a question, Sheriff? Hold on, Council, I just want to read this first, if that's okay, and then you can. So let's stick, let's stick to this, Bill, knows you have a clarification on on this.
I have a question for the council.
Okay, but is it on this particular?
On twenty seven.
Okay, twenty seven, all right, go ahead.
Uh, so Liz, if if, for example, if the board decided there was going to be a reduction in the number of units.
Mm hmm.
That would be acceptable under this development agreement, however, if they went the other way. And said there was going to be an increase in units, so say to thirty units, that would not be acceptable, correct?
Correct.
And if, in, um. If. The, uh. Well, I guess that answered my question, that's, that's basically.
The, the D A places a minimum restriction, so.
Or maximum, in the case of like density.
Maximum allowances, minimum restrictions. So the board can be more restrictive, and the development agreement will be considered based on that language, modified accordingly, anytime those restrictions are added.
And so, for example. If we were to. There's language in here about some roadway sidewalk and traffic pattern improvements, if we were to add more curb cut to that or something like that, that that's easily amendable?
Yeah. Parking, if you require the spaces to be larger, more accessible, parking is wholly within your jurisdiction now, it's not, it's not part of the development agreement anymore.
Bill Crenshaw?
Um. To your question about the flexibility and the comment about within our jurisdiction. And that's one of the advantages of the development agreement, so I think, you know, for example, if came through the process, and the developer suddenly said. And I'm gonna give five thousand dollars to the council and agent. That is not within our jurisdiction of the special permit. That would be the D A. So. Is that not correct? So that would be a limiting factor on the outcome of the special permit process.
Did you, did you catch that, Liz?
I didn't catch all of that, I'm sorry.
You want to try to? What do you want me to try to?
If the, if you wanted to require them to pay more money and to.
Let me, I'll, I'll try to, I'll try to paraphrase, because it's, um. So if we, if you, you clearly laid out that we have the ability to add more restrictive items to this, which are, that are inside of the planning board purview.
Yeah.
Mr. Crenshaw's example was that, about something that is not necessarily part of the planning board purview, and his example was, what happens if the developer. Based on our discussions. Uh, offers to provide a five thousand dollar donation to the council of aging, council on aging. That's not part of planning board purview. But it's something that is added as to, as a benefit to the town. How would that be managed in terms of modifying the D A at that point?
That would be voluntary, that's not the board requiring them to do that, so that's not. Necessarily prohibited. If they're voluntarily offering to give money. And they are willing to put it in writing, there's nothing preventing them from doing that.
Would we have to update the D A, because that's something that I think we were typically seen a D A, is that correct?
You can modify the D A, and there's nothing preventing you from modifying the D A. Um, that section says. Well, not that section, there's the amendment section. Says that. As long as it's in writing and agreed to by both parties, it can be amended. So there's nothing preventing you from going back and doing that.
That's section thirteen modifications, is that correct?
Yes, after the recording of notice of this agreement, this agreement can only be modified if such modification is in writing, signed by the developer, the select board. And the planning board upon a simple majority vote. So if, if you, if they wanted to provide additional payment, they can do that, so long as they're voluntarily entering into that agreement.
The the sequencing. Reduces the strength of the town's position, but I I'm curious as to. For that example, when would that modification and signature of the amended D A happen in the process?
Did you catch that, Liz?
Yeah, so it depends on the circumstances. When, whenever that. Proposal is made. And the developer accepts and agrees to it, it can be modified, there's no, there's no timeline in place, it can be modified at any time. So long as it's mutually agreed to.
At any point before the special permit is issued, correct?
No, after the special permit is issued as well, it just needs to be signed originally. And executed before the special permit is issued.
So the original has to be, that's security for the special permit.
Right.
And then modifications can be added afterwards, as long as all parties.
Yes.
Right, and we did that in forty two, so.
Yeah.
We saw, I can't remember what changed, something changed, though.
Yes.
I mean, we did that. Um, I assume section twenty seven and thirteen are non-qualify.
No, they're not.
What else, anything else, guys? I have a question first, and, uh. What is the work to get this thing done now? Why are we pushing this now?
I, I think I can help answer that, quote, Jim, and and Bill, maybe this is something you could help out. My understanding is that the, this is, the, the impetus for this, Jim. Is for the, the developer and the select board to be able to mutually agree to the conditions in the host community agreement. This is the reason, the, the only reason we're doing this ahead of time, is for the H C A. If there was no H C A. Then I, we would not be having these conversations.
Yeah.
Yet. Did I get that right about Bill?
Yes.
So the only reason we're doing this is to provide assurances to the town. So that. They, so that the select board feels comfortable. Engaging in the H C A. Now, I'm not speaking directly about this particular applicant, but in general. I think the select board wants assurances. Uh, so that, uh, there can't be like a bait and switch or anything of that nature, meaning like a developer, a developer, not this one, but a developer who come in. Sign just the H C A, make a bunch of promises that are not in writing. Take the H C A and then leverage that to have a different project than they, than they put on the table and issue. So the select board wants. Wants the guarantees listed about the concept of a project, so that they can tie that to the H C A. Because otherwise, they don't want the H C A just to go off. And not get the project itself. So we're trading project for H C A essentially. In a way. Does that help?
It 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 helps, Chris, I'm I'm still not satisfied with the, uh. My original comments, but I I understand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely take, I'm definitely. My effort into this has been to support what the select board needs. So I've been, I've been following their needs and being very supportive of what they've asked.
I understand, and I appreciate it.
So, so Chris, I think that brings us back to Bob's earlier comment, and is to, is there another way? That doesn't involve playing word participation, and in my. Simplistic look at it, there seems to be, I mean, why can't the host agreement simply be contingent upon. Development of a mixed use project at that site of. A minimum size, which is probably whatever is allowed as of right, which is pretty big. And. Leave it at that.
Um. But Liz, did you catch that?
Yes.
You mind helping?
Yep, I think that, um. It could be, but the funding commitment is also coming from the host community agreement. I think. The developer wants to secure the funding as well. And having that development agreement in place probably helps with their financing. And helps it to move forward, they're also getting that commitment for the bond. From. The marijuana establishment as part of. Signing the development agreement. So I think delaying it, there is a risk that the developer could. Not go forward, I don't know. But I'm not, I'm still not sure what is preventing. Why do you want an alternative to, to moving forward with the development agreement?
It's a general discomfort of a lack of familiarity, of, for me at least, being able to sign this without. Having a special permit application to actually look at and review, and to go through the hearing process with public input.
But the special permit application is separate from the development agreement, so anything. Provided in here is in addition to the special permit requirement, and it's required. Prior to the special permit being granted. So I don't think this is going to affect the special permit processes in, in any way, other than to provide additional protection for the town.
And and I think, Liz, if we all had a lot of agrees, we may be able to agree with you on these points, so just please bear with us as we, you know, develop either an understanding or more of a comfortable basis. Chris, may I add something, now that we've burst in and done?
Well, the other thing I was gonna say is that we're also just used to the flexibility of, yes, we need to sign the development agreement before we sign any special permits. But then being done at the same time gives us a chance to look at the development, the impacts it has on our community, and use that to inform the specifics of the development agreement. I don't think that that's crazy, I think that that's just how we've done it, so to put this beforehand now, probably will be fine. But it seems odd that we can't look at the specifics of how it will impact the community. Before we try and sign this agreement that it's supposed to deal with the impacts on the community, to understand, like, that's, it's, it's just switched in our minds, because it's different than how it's been done before.
Normally, would you hold the public hearing and be prepared to? I mean, the way the bylaws written and what the town assistant town administrator told me was that those two projects that came before were uh the anomaly that this is the process that's supposed to be done based on the bylaw. Um. Is there anything that changed as a result of the public hearing or the special permit process in the prior development agreement?
I I think that might be slightly a misunderstanding. Um if if we go back pretty far in time, um the what my understanding from members of my board and other previous boards is that the town has had a long history of doing development agreements while special permit is in process. Um but regardless, I'm not too concerned about the sort of sequencing. I want to focus more on uh whether we have the the planning board has, you know, our authority that we feel that we need to carry for the town and mayor to act on its behalf, regardless of when items are signed. Um I know, Bill, you had Phil London, you wanted to add to this.
Yeah, I think I think the the big part is what uh when we're correcting the minutes, even what uh Bill had mentioned earlier. This didn't start as a mixed use project. This started as a marijuana delivery, a proposed marijuana delivery. And at that point, there was a level of discomfort expressed at the um select board level and and I think in general for the um the attendees anyway, that if this was to occur, they would want it, they want to ensure that there's going to be additional for the additional mixed use project. That led to kind of the the linking of the host community agreement with the development agreement. So the reason I think that that one of the reasons for the 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 rush is on the HCA was to these were not two entities that were together first. We kind of forced this. The town created this project where you're going to have um UPA merging with the mixed use project. So because of that, I think the dynamics changed, and I would imagine what Liz said about the funding uh coming and being dependent on the HCA probably played a role in this. So I think it's important to remember that this came just originally, it didn't even come this came, you know, as the board, the select board as a marijuana delivery. And then it kind of incorrectly changed to the mixed use project. And there were two entities that are now working together that I don't think be when the process began, they were not working together. So I think that's kind of the reason uh that this is important to establish this theory. The second question um was addressed to Natalie's point about and and you're absolutely right now with the development agreement. But I would also add that we as a planning board, we have also the the downtown overlay this special permit criteria that it's going to have to the project is going to have to meet down line. And I would say to a lot of community concerns, that would be the ideal time to to address those. Um and that's that's two cents.
I think they're just funding quite hard. That's really not come up before and I'm a little uncomfortable going, well, we have to make it so I can get bank money. Um but I I'm confused as to how this development agreement has any advantages of obtaining funding if we're being told that everything in this development agreement can be changed by us during the special permit process. So we could end up with a Dunkin' Donuts at the end of the special private process. Um. So how is this agreement of any standing in obtaining funding? And I guess that does roll back to my question is there can be just a separate way of, you know, they just condition the the host agreement on there being any mixed use development of a certain size that we all know is as a right on a site.
I don't agree that you can change the project to be to become a Dunkin' Donuts. Um you still have to, I mean, I'm what I said was you can make additional restrictions, place additional restrictions on the project. You can't change the project.
Oh, well, that's a big problem for me. Because I should not want to go blind before an application is submitted that we have no say over the elements of this.
You can't do that as a as a result of the special permit process. Anyway, you can't tell anyone that if they come in with one proposal, you want it to be something else. That's not within the town jurisdiction in any way.
Let's uh uh let's pull this back for a minute. The typical process was would be that an applicant submits an a an application to the town and mayor for special permit and indicates that they want to use the DOD overly disparate criteria for that special permit, right? Did I get that right, Bill London?
Yes.
And then we would have a application meeting with that applicant, meaning that town staff would meet with that applicant, work through behind the scenes on engineering and some other elements so that they understand our process so that they are helped, that we help them get prepared for a hearing. They come before the board. We open up a hearing, we hold hearings. If we end up ruling in favor of an applicant, then they receive special permit and through that process, a development agreement can be developed. We don't always need a DA, but it's a development agreement can be developed if needed.
Well, you'd always you'd always need one if you're dealing with certain components of the downtown overlay district, like for example, bonus. Um so that's not an option. Okay. So we we so that's the typical process in the downtown.
Now, my big question is, and this is the overarching question. Deciding this DA by the planning board prevents any of those elements in any of our authority to advocate for the town at all?
Does the DA prevent you from doing? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of that.
With my whole preamble about the typical process.
Yep.
To assign the DA, this this development agreement, does that prevent us from from engaging or executing on any of those responsibilities or authorities of the process that I just described?
It's not removing the planning board's authority and um things that are within their purview. And it actually says that in the development agreement somewhere, it's not a guarantee that they'll receive a special permit.
So we we have all of our authorities still in established.
Yes.
And we will be able to execute our duties as we would for any other project that did not have a DA at its time.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I'm trying to under I I get the hesitance hesitancy. I'm also have some hesitancy because it's just for me, it's unfamiliar. But I am trying to figure out trying to understand what is the downside? And Liz, is there what what is the downside by signing? There has to be some downside here to us.
In signing it?
Or or the planning board specifically?
Uh. You want me to?
Restriction. There has to be some restriction. There's 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 no downside to us. There's no restriction on us at all.
Well, that's kind of what my confusion where my confusion lied. I I wasn't sure what restriction you thought it would be placing on your authority. Um.
It sounds like there's none.
I don't think that there is. So that's kind of what I was getting at earlier. I'm not I'm not sure. Um. And that's why I I said if you have some specific concerns or you can point to something that says that you have less authority as a planning board because you've signed this, I I don't I don't see it anywhere.
And there's no impact to the public engagement process either?
No.
Correct.
Liz, what would happen um in because one of the earlier con- concerns was if the delivery project is um is there a way that the delivery project could go forward right now without the mixed use project?
It's so the way so this came up actually at the select board meeting. The location is a primary element of the host community agreement. If the location changes, that host community agreement is no longer valid. They are proposed to be in the back of the development that's subject to the development agreement. And they're proposed to be part of the development agreement. Um and it's referenced in the HCA. So they cannot go forward if the development as a whole does not go forward.
That was my question. Any other thoughts from the language?
I'm confused. Are we doing this because of the uh that's possibly of financing for this project? Is that what the whole?
That's not at all. From my point of view, I don't think that has any concern of us. We have I I know Liz commented on financing. She was just speculating on why the developer may want it. But I have not heard I'm not aware of any conversation that we're doing this to help with financing.
No, no, we're not helping with financing. I was saying that that the uh marijuana establishment would be financing the bond as part of the development agreement. And so that's kind of why they want to know before they pay up that money that the development agreement is going forward.
And then that's that's speculation, I think. I don't think.
Yeah, no, that's not from their mouth. I'm just, yeah, I'm saying that they're tied in that way.
She's Liz is just speculating about why the developer may this may be beneficial to them, but I don't really care about that, to be honest. I had nothing to do with the developer.
So I'm a little confused with that part of, oh, they need this development agreement signed because they have to know if they're gonna have to have a security bond. And it's like this development agreement is making them do it today. And normally, that's like we do it again. So it's kind of like we're forcing them to do it. And it's weird circles. You know, we require it now. So and they're like, well, I have to have a development agreement that says that. Why?
Um maybe maybe Liz, you could subtract your comments on their financing because I think it's.
Okay, I'm not trying to confuse anyone. I was just saying that they're 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 tied in terms of financing, and that's probably why they would like it to go forward simultaneously. I'm not saying that the town is in any way facilitating their financing or their ability to move forward.
But but isn't it fair, Liz, to say my point was that there this is a creature that has evolved with the two projects.
Yeah, yeah.
And and that that was the change. That was my point about it, not necessarily financing. It's that I don't know what happened. Bill Crenshaw is correct. This does have a surety bond of three hundred thousand dollars that would be executed upon the signing of the development agreement.
Yes, so that's what I was getting at. I'm sorry. That that's that was my point was that the HCA would probably be the one providing that charity bond.
That's actually provided the the event.
And the the select board wants a surety bond for this DA.
All right, and they will uh they'll get when it's signed, but if we all all off on the it will be them then. Not now. I I've not heard anything that convinced me that we need to go forward with uh the agreement now. And we can't wait until we have the public. Nothing is conditional.
And I'm also confused now. Is the select board demanding this development agreement or is it the developer demanding this?
Development agreement?
No, no, that.
Nobody is.
Yeah, I I think I'm sorry, Liz.
I'm sorry, nobody I've in my it's my understanding that nobody's demanding the development agreement.
That that's correct. The the there's the reason the development agreement came up as a uh to be paired with the HCA was because at the time the concern was expressed in a number of terms that we do not want to have the delivery and chance that it happens without having the mixed use project to it. And and there was a lot of other stuff, but flat out, that's what we're about. And and so thi- this was uh brought up internally, is that this could be a way to do it where you guarantee the um minimums or maximums that are bound into the development agreement, which was to define certain things, whether amenities, maximum density, minimum um whatever. But that was a way to address the concern in a pragmatic manner that took advantage of what was already on our books and in our um zoning bylaws. And and Jim, I think if somebody had said, um somebody said, look, we want a good mixed use project there. Um. How do we make it happen? It would be it would have been a different situation, but by having it as part of the marijuana and having that those two entities together, it just created a new level of complexity. And there's just and I don't know the in the intricacies of, you know, the relationship between the parties. But I think if you're saying, yes, there's a town better off to have that project more or less is described there, how do we make it happen? And when we make it happen, we'd need to provide a level of security to the town that this project will occur as a whole. And I think that that's really the whole essence.
It's still hasn't that already been done by the fact that the uh select board has uh signed off on this. So that should give the developer the idea that the town is behind it and are w- waiting for our hearing process going through shouldn't change that at all.
In my experience, in the purpose of the the development agreement, I would want to see in it what it was the a lot of um make it as a bridge as possible and making sure we address the essential elements. So in this case, the contribution by the developer to the to the river um amenity, that was that was something that you would not want to go forward and just say, oh, we're not sure what we're gonna do. I wouldn't think. But on the other hand, I wouldn't say if I was a developer, I wouldn't want to say, what is the maximum number of units that I'm going to go? I mean, I would I would want to know what the maximum number of units is. And everybody signing off, I think we want to know, you know, the twenty eight units or or whatever. I think that's a totally reasonable thing to be in. But it's 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 in the end, in my opinion, it is. Do we want this project to be a mixed use project there? How do we make it happen in the form that the town wants? And that gives the security to everybody. And this was a weird just kind of weird thing because we forced these two projects.
But but from from my point of view, as a member of the planning board, the it's it the the select board wanted to have assurances in in an agreement. And I'm I'm supportive of this effort to to support because I'm in support of what the select board tells me they so that's my reasoning for it is to support the select board so that they can do the work as least a bit. Um and as long as we're not being restricted in our authority or responsibility, I I don't see a downside, but I do see an upside in being able to support the select board and their efforts. So that's that's the that's the that's the the one reason why and the only reason why I support considering signing up this head of time.
Well, you make a good case, Chris, but I I still am adamant about the fact that I can't see whether it's done now or after the public hearing has been been done. Uh. I I I don't see any downside to waiting until we get a a hearing and people uh being able to have a uh an input. I I think that by signing it beforehand, we're really telling people at a public hearing, well, we've already done this, so anything you do is not uh applicable. I don't think that's the appropriate way to go about doing.
Liz, is it required that the that the planning board signs this at all at this time? I mean, the select board sign. So what's?
Well, it's it's not executed until it's signed by both parties, but I just want to uh clarify one thing. Um the public hearing would not be on. Um, the public hearing would not be on the development agreement. It would be on a special permit.
I recognize that, Liz, but I, I think that the fact that we've already signed the development agreement uh, beforehand, uh, gives an impression to the, anybody concerned about this that, well, it's a phase of concrete, we've already done it, so all you're doing is putting an input in. I don't think it's a proper way to do it.
It, it's definitely a perception thing, Liz, for sure. Um, you don't want anyone to get to miss, to misinterpret this as that we've all, that the planning board, you know, has already agreed to an application that's, that hasn't been submitted yet.
I realize that I came in late in the process, um, because I only stepped in when, when the agreement was written and my role was to review it. Did the planning board vote on the process prior to the team moving forward? I, I thought that there was meetings in the beginning about the strat.
You did not have any votes. I did appoint myself and one other member to join a committee uh, at, at the request of town, um, the town to, to support this effort. Um, and our role was to provide guidance on how typically in the past, the planning board has considered things.
Okay.
And if I may, um, I quote from the March twenty two minutes. Minutes note that the working group would discuss the general blueprint and report back to the main boards for in, which is to report back, I guess, tonight.
Um, this is something else that, that might help the board in their discussion, um. If I was the developer and I was looking at what I want to get out of the development agreement to be, I want to level three in certain areas. So for example, I would want to know what my commitment is going to be for the, the river many. I would want to know if the, if the board, let's just say, for example, that the board had something that made the project completely as proposed in the conceptual plan unfeasible. We don't want to mix with private care, just or something like that. I would want to know that pretty early on. And, and I think that's why that would be in the advantage of having, you know, minimum in there, but, um, but maybe there's a way, like I say, is there another way? Maybe there is a way to alleviate certain concerns if there are some, or provide assurances of certain concepts, things like that, that would maybe, um, achieve the, you know, the, the goal that the developer is, um, wanted to take from a development agreement.
Bill could not be changed if he buy somebody an application.
Well, I look back at like, once, when, when we were doing, uh, Bill and I were working years ago on, um, with Major Crossing, and we didn't, we worked on this development grant for, God knows how, but, but there were certain things that were established early on that we, that, and that we knew were going to be more or less in there. And one of the things, we were talking about bringing it to the public hearing process, it works the other way too, in that the public knows what's already been agreed to. So for example, in the case of Major Crossing, there was a financial agreement that already made the, whatever the number was. Okay, you get it. In this case, you're going forward saying, we're getting a river amenity or we're getting whatever, you know, whatever's in the agreement. And so it provides, it, it, it's not something that's going to be negotiated with somebody at a public hearing would say, well, you know, we don't even know if that's gonna happen. You can say, no, this is already in the, we know there's a passion on division or a building or whatever specifics. You want to have this?
There is one risk in opening the public hearing first and then executing the development agreement. The problem with that is, once you open the, the public hearing for the special permit, the statutory deadline, the clock starts ticking and you cannot unilaterally uh, sign the development agreement. You have to have the, any changes that you would make would need to also be signed off on by the select board. And so if you can't agree, you run the risk of hitting your, your timeframe for approving the special permit and not having an agreement on the development agreement side. And so then you would have to execute the development agreement prior to the special permit being issued. And so the two would be tied and you'd need to extend the deadlines for approval.
So I can understand why this is going, we're, why this left board is trying to have this happen in this order. I get it. Um, and I, I'm not worried about the amenities, like Bill just said, you know, from, from front viewing platform, which is, you know, like, that's gonna be there. I get it. That's good. The problem is, if we say the developer is proposing to construct twenty eight units of rental housing on the property, I don't know enough about this project yet, to know how many they are due by right. Is it fourteen? Because none of this say twenty eight. And we said, actually, that's not reasonable. You can have twenty.
Right.
I feel like this is not a honest agree, you know, like, I, I, I'm coming into it. So now, the thing is, Chris, Chris, you know, negotiated for this, so I trust him to do that. But it just feels, you know, some of our biggest issues with project, with projects have been literally like the size of them. And I just, sometimes the twenty eight units, you know, I, I haven't even heard about the neighbors. I don't know the size, you know, like, all I see is this, which is not enough for me. But I mean, if, if there's enough flexibility that we can say, just kidding, you can't have twenty eight, you can have twenty. That's fine with me. I feel like it's not great for the developer.
That's the way we wrote the developer grade was the maximum.
That, and then that's.
Well, you did on that one item, but in general, we came from a developer, developer, it's like, they promised me this project. And this project requires a lot of relief, a lot of waivers, some not even by us. And even the inference that we were okaying those relief and waivers is a problem for me.
How is it different in the, I don't know that we've talked about waivers as so much as how is this different from what the downtown overlay district calls for in in the zoning bylaws? In other words, we're saying, well, this is too intense. Now, maybe it may be too intense for a spot or something. I get that. But it's not too intense for bylaws. Bylaws are clear of what it says. And you can have so many units here if you do this, if you do this. So, I mean, why is that? Because I, I think that is, I don't think that's, I, I think that's important.
But that'd be fine if you could do that without any relief in any way that's not.
But all the time in the D O D, we haven't been able to do that with any, yeah, the O D project. I, I think, I don't disagree with that, I'm saying, but I think we have to be careful that this is being developed under our zoning bylaws as the downtown overlay district project. It's something that is, we've been working with, and we've got enough experience with it now. No, there's, there's always some tweaking. That's the the idea was to make creative design with it that works and and maintains the spirit of what we're trying to achieve in the zoning bylaws. And in most cases, it, it sets the maximums and we're in the maximums. I'm not saying this location is perfect, but it's certainly not that. But I'm saying that the downtown overlay district has the set of a, a, a development and regulatory framework for a certain type of design. And, and we, we should work with that, I think. That's in my.
Uh, are we not? Uh, I mean, you're suggesting that if we don't sign this agreement now, uh, we can't do it, uh, later on using the same criteria?
Oh, not at all. I'm not saying that.
I think what he's, sorry, uh, not to interrupt, I, I think what Bill's saying is their own, there's, there're certain things that they're allowed to do if they do other things. And the development agreement is what's allowing them to do what they're proposing. They have to do this first if they want to do that. And so he's saying, you know, if they're allowed pursuant to the bylaw to do this, then why wouldn't we allow them to do it?
What would happen if tomorrow morning, the people at the comic book store decided to sell to this, these people here and that provides more units? What happens then?
It's not allowed by the development agreement.
That's right, but that might happen.
Only if we don't sign the development agreement.
I think that so far, and I have to be honest with you, I, I listen to you, Liz, and you make a lot of sense. And I listen to Bill, and he makes a lot of sense. But as far as I'm concerned, you have not convinced me that we are not, I, you, I, I'm not ready to sign this development agreement until we see a set of plans and an application to get this thing started. Pure and simple, I can't.
I'm not pushing you to do that. And I apologize if I appear to be, um, it's not my role to tell you what to do. I'm only here to address your concerns and try to answer any questions that you have.
It's amazing, anything I'm just responding to what is.
Jim Coleman's a big boy. He doesn't think you're doing that at all. It's okay. Wait, you kept me, Jim.
So we've talked a lot about whether it's appropriate to sign it now. Can we talk about what's in it? Since this is the first time we've actually presented with the information?
We, we can do that. Um, I, I'm cognizant of Liz's time as well. I'm, I'm curious, um, we're not signing tonight. Um, and maybe, maybe perhaps we, Liz, uh, we could thank you for your time. Um, and then we could talk amongst ourselves about the items that are in it, unless anyone really wanted Liz to continue on with us?
I only have one, uh, thing I wanted to raise before you do that and before I leave. The select board voted to approve this with E, three E stricken. And so what I was talking about before with the parking, um, this draft doesn't show that change. But as a requirement of the vote of the select board, they wanted to strike E and leave that, leave parking completely to the planning board.
So three E, it says at minimum bike racks for public use quantity and location as prescribed by the S P G A. Yeah, I think this one's striking. I think we did put the new one up.
You did, okay, I'm sorry. The one that was in the packet in the mailing, I didn't get the most recent.
Okay, Phil, you're, you're confirming that what was stricken is now, is currently not in the development agreement. Yeah, there, there, there's nothing in the disagreement, um. Um, if there, and, and if it showed up in there, perhaps it was taken out of one other spot, but I don't see it.
No, sorry, that was in the, the mailing that went out that I was copied on. So it was probably sent before the vote, maybe.
Oh, I see, yeah. As a matter of fact, if, just to clear it up, let's, let's clear it up right now. I can pull it up right in Word docs. I'll show you in what we, the latest version. It's okay, Bill. Yeah, yeah, we're good. Okay, it's not in here.
Okay.
Um, Liz, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. And so feel free to send me any questions that result from this meeting.
Uh, okay, thanks, Liz.
Bye.
So yeah, we can, um, discuss what's in this. Maybe maybe the best thing to do is start at, the preamble is not really super important. It doesn't discuss really the project. It all just covers different sections of authority. Number one is develop, developer undertakings. This is developer shall diligently, professionally pursue the development on the property, including obtaining all necessary permits of the block in conjunction with the town. Item two is compliance with nine point four point five, which is from my point of view, was just a, a regurgitation of the expectation and intent of nine four five. Stop me.
I got, I got this. One is um, I guess the second to last line. Developer shall provide a maximum of twenty eight units with no fewer than seven units dedicated there for individuals making aid for their less experienced. Which is super good for us, because apparently that's saying if they end up with twelve units, seven of them have to be affordable, but that is super unfair to developers. That's not what they're thinking. So you know, from a, to be fair, I mean, requiring seven, no matter how many units there are is.
Honestly, I read that sort of, not quite in the same vein, but when I saw this, I said, you know, that that provides an assurance to the select board that we will have uh, subsidized house for this project.
Right, so this second should just say twenty five percent of residential units will be afforded. It really doesn't need to get into the specifics that, you know, end up hurting the, the.
I, I'm not the developer's new person.
But it, it hurts us too, because if we say, hey, you know what? The traffic is such that we can't take twenty eight, but we can take twenty two. And he's like, but you're requiring seven affordable units. That makes this project infeasible. You can't deny me my permit, if, but we, then we monetize the.
But they already, they're.
But I'm just saying, why muck it up with stuff?
I mean, at this left, we're even their lawyer already acknowledged that, that specifically, right?
I know, all right, well, that's fine. That's fine. And then the highlight, the second point, this, the last line there is, you know, it's not a promise of anything. It's just like the developer will ask the town for money to subsidize a very low income unit. So the developer gets credit for using our tax one. I mean, it's weird to have it in there.
The, the department explored the possibility. They pushed back on that. Bob, Bob and I, is that what Bob, I think you were adamant about trying to get a sixty percent number, is that what you call? Um, and, and I believe their response was that, um, it's going to be hard to admit to that at the moment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not recalling, even if I have to go back and look into different iterations. To see where that came from.
They, they asked us to want that back and I don't, I think that was some middle ground that has absolutely no authority.
I mean, it just highlights that, you know, something like that is figured out during the process. Once they put their lift application together, have all their finances and accounts figured out. Weird details like this, which is, yes, again. That's my comment on on the first part too, because what, what all the other, all those other thing?
Number, number I, number one, seven designated portable units. This, in my point of view, was a regurgitation. Isn't that state statute?
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all.
And this is why I was saying during the joint meeting that a lot of this I saw as just showing, laying up of the developer and writing the things that are required regardless of any special permit or anything else. Number two is there shall be seven portable units built at all times. I don't know why this, this language is written as it is, but it is.
Well, this commitment is something that may or may not be desirable, but floating units. Because that's something that's usually a negotiated item. It means that it's not, unit four is always the eight, the eighty percent, could be, you know, the we'll have seven of these and, you know, depending who moves out when. But it kind of depends on, you know, the locations and the size. It's like, you know what? You know, you can't float it if you only got one three bedroom that's handicap accessible. That has to always be the A M I. So this is a unnecessary limitation on the town at this point, because that stuff is all worked out during the uh, application discussion.
I don't know how that.
Because that has a separate sign off too. That's whole process of its own. And our planning rights require, um, written notification. So now we have authority trust that the lift is all set.
So these items would be discussed during the board level and trust.
Uh, yes.
And does, Bill, I assume the, the lens or the. The, those conversations would then. So the, the, the husband or, the affordable housing trust is not signed with. So it does not say that they have. That same going to modify. This, this EA.
I think, well, no, no, probably, but I think the four of the housing trust, it would advise. The select board, right, if they reviewed it, then that only works. Like that one.
Yeah, well, the four of the housing trust is a cemetery on one of the. On the lift application.
But, right, for lift. But, but for us. It would just be, we would just say, we.
Well, we require a letter from the trust, saying, it's all set, right? The, the trust doesn't really care how many units, they only care that it's proper. For the, for, they work out all those.
These, the, and, and I think these are all great moments, but we still don't seem to land. Uh, I'm not saying they're not, they're valuable, so I'm saying not that.
It, it's actually not any longer. It probably was, because well, there was a trial. But all that, when you show it's now, they're.
I mean, I want them to be successful in their, in their pursuits as well. And we didn't get into this step, I, I did not get.
I expect this is just a copy and paste from another one. I don't hear anybody actually thought about it.
I, 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 I re-please myself.
I already think the belt. So I'm just saying it's just. An applied limitation for the town.
Well, it's uh. Has to go before the select board. Right?
Yeah.
Select board also has number thirteen and number twenty seven, allowing them to modify. And or. That a permit, let's say a permit.
Oh, wow. It's an application.
If that is more restrictive, right, if that is more restrictive than this agreement.
But we can, we can just, we can just cross it up to. If we think this is a carrier, we can just cross it up. Yeah, that's what it is.
Coming, that, that makes sense. I created the. Yeah.
There, then it'll read, there shall be seven portable units still. Or the process will bring that, I, I don't know, answers.
I, I just don't like that, because they're gonna say, well, you promised us twenty eight, because they're giving us seven.
But it clearly says that that's the maximum. I know.
Or just like something like flashing neon saying developer, you realize what you're agreeing to, well, that initial.
But they did, they learned anyway, they, you know.
And it's really, L I P I, which is. It's just, it's not hard to.
For Roman, or what's her?
Roman, Roman three and while, and four, I, I. It's not my favorite.
Well, the, the, basically. Um. What has ha- happened recently is that we have. A pretty good understanding with our house consultant and. Hopefully with the, the applicants that um. It's. The applicant's responsibility to get the affordable, what, the, the, the lift done. And, and what we've said, and I beat a lot of developers over the head with, it's like, get your consult, get a housing consultant and do it. Start it now, you know, you, you can go ahead and do it, there's no reason. But it's on you. And, and. You should start sooner rather than later, and we didn't always have that, lately we've been okay with it. Um, so I think that's what number three is, is saying that, you know.
Is this just laying out something they would have to do with this?
It's clarifying, it, it's taking away a headache for us later, the potential headache. That one, because. I mean.
They can be, I, and I don't. Any, I do want to focus on funny boy stuff, so, Bill, finish up, you have to edit some.
There's one thing that. Reinford do not address, and that's. The ongoing certification costs. Of affordable housing, because they have to do annual reporting and, you know, they have to do paperwork to. Make sure every year they're charging them correct rents and, you know, they've gotten the right people and. And. So there's always a question of who bears that cost. And it's silent on that, so it would imply that the town bears that cost. Because it's a town process, you, the town participate in the process. So normally you would make that clean. That's why we pay. Our, our HSO, you know. Do some of those things, and it's perfectly fine for us to do that on ones we initiate, but. For ones others initiated may not be perfectly fine to, to the taxpayer.
I can't remember who did that on manner crossing, because they're, they pay, they have their own. And we might have put it in their agreement, the develop, I mean, in the uh decision, because they do, I mean. But that's, that's something we definitely want to make sure it's covered, that's a good point.
I'll, I'll allow you to work offline if you want to provide a, a proposed edit. I'll have that. If you want. You can stay with till next meeting. Um, number five is uh ten thousand dollars to the community preservation fund. And again, this is a minimum number, because we can make things more restrictive, is my understanding.
Oh, well. Good point, then, I report for a minimum.
Well, as Liz said, we can make things more restrictive, so we can. If we decide to require that this project requires a fifteen thousand dollar donation. We can do that.
Yeah. Or. Want to make it clear on the gym.
They don't have an answer to it.
We can build answers, we change it to a minimum of ten thousand dollars?
Uh, we could, I'm, I'm looking, I'm trying to see our planning board regulations, didn't we call it out though? No, we didn't call that one out there? No, we require, you require ten thousand two hundred per unit. Okay, so just put, yeah, put no, but a minimum. Oh.
I don't know how that's going to be received, but we'll find out. Number six, number six, the developer shall at its own expense engage the required professionals. For to design and instruct publicly accessible, engaging compliant, or. You pavilion and its necessary components. The D O D. Through the standards of the concom, in compliance with state and federal rents, the river view pavilion. Has an estimated cost that doesn't matter. Will be completed regardless of actual cost and prior conditions as, as you see though.
Well, actually, the cost shouldn't matter, because the cost is offsetting the state harbor amount for the bonus units. So they have a minimum contribution of ten thousand two hundred times extra unit.
Oh, so.
But we can, but that will need to be determined by actual cost later on. Right? Or, uh.
Well, the town needs to get. I mean, if it's fourteen extra units they're asking for, thirteen extra units. They have to come up with a hundred and thirty thousand change.
That's why they had that number there.
I was wondering how many extra units is it, because isn't this two pieces of property kind of somewhere? With square footage.
Say it again, sorry?
I'm just trying to figure out what they actually have, are due by rights, in terms of numbers of unit, without talking about the density bonus.
Um, yeah, you would use, in that, in that case, um, the. I think it's the, the three properties, so it'd be cumulative square footage.
Right, and then it would be fifteen.
So what is it?
It's like, it's fifteen or fourteen, it's on that, yeah, it's on the word. We have, we had to break down.
Had, had rights fifteen, mixed.
Yeah.
It has to be a mixed, regardless.
Yes.
So they need to meet, they need to meet that obligation. Regardless of what they're estimating for this cost number now.
Right, and they need it for a combination of five and six. It could all be in five, we'd be down. Or it could all be six, I guess.
Right. But just because that estimate now, a hundred thirty three thousand is there, it doesn't mean that that's the estimate we'll accept later on, because we will be. Requesting town staff to review. That in lieu of their management. Based on construction, this was back to the. The conversation we had two weeks ago about this section that will rewrite, I mean, must be construction costs.
Right.
But we'll have, I will be requesting that town engineer and others review. The value of that.
Actually, you know what, then it's good that we have the word a minimum of five, because, yeah, if the cost comes in at fifty bucks for the viewpoint. Uh, we need to make it up in five.
And, but they still need to, need the, the regulate our, our, our bylaws, so. They still need to match the bylaw. Yeah, so they can't, they can't not match the bylaw. Because we won't issue a special permit.
Right.
So in that step. Let's say the design actually passed. A hundred and maybe forty thousand. Then. They shouldn't be. Required to pay as a plan thousand.
They won't be.
But they are under the screen.
Exactly.
Right.
So on the other hand, you know, if the. Pavilion comes in at a hundred thousand, then they're sure.
Yep. Then we make up for it.
So you look up.
You say that again, Bob? Lost that, was it, so we're saying, okay.
So if we change five to be a minimum of ten thousand dollars, and that allows flexibility, right? To vacillate between about a hundred thirty three thousand would make sense right now, right, based on the thirteen extra units.
Right.
Um.
For the river view pavilion.
Depending on the flexibility of what the river view pavilion actually costs, right, either a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars, right? Either way, we get our ten thousand dollars, if Roman comes in at a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
We can make up the difference in terms of bringing it up for those thirteen units, we can make up the difference in number five. Right?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But, but then on the other hand, it shouldn't be a minimum of ten thousand, because. If the cost of the river pavilion. Is so high. That they are already leading the deployment to six.
Yeah.
Then they shouldn't have to pay under five.
And if we wanted to. Provide then relief on that front, then we could modify this, or we could say we're not modifying.
Yeah, I'm sure they're going along with that.
But we can do that in a special permit, and it will reflect in this, right, automatically, that's, so.
We would have to agree to.
I think it's good to have it in there.
And select board would have to agree to, right, by removing, if you really want to remove the ten thousand dollars, yes, that's listed here. Plenty more to select board, obviously, developed with, right, plenty more to select, we have to agree.
Well, what, what was more hard access than that, so.
Uh, good arms on it, actually, yeah, we got.
So, so has the cost estimate been reviewed, it's referenced here, so I assume that someone on our team has.
They provided a cost breakdown of it. And it had a number of items. Um, some, some earthwork.
And it happens to close to that.
Yeah, just, but I, 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 I knew that was playing out.
Yes.
While also having the understanding that. We will have. Professional support and valuing those costs during special permits. So whatever that number is, that estimated number needs to just be able to be confirmed by our staff as well.
I mean, it's.
So.
All it is, is an elevated porch for four benches. Um.
It's hanging over the after that.
It's not hanging, yes. Um, how to create a little picture.
Wow.
So I, I.
It was a glass bottom one, yeah, I see that.
I believe that the cost also include. Um, the. Their concept of, of that coffee shop right there. And my concern about that, my concern about this, did I have that right?
No, 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 not at all, okay, that was just, that was a separate, a separate matter. Because the coffee shop is not public space, it's sort of, well, publicly.
But what about it's walkway to the coffee shop, it's often a walkway to the viewpoint.
So the viewpoint.
Yeah, if we talk to shop, ask the viewpoint.
So that would all have to be public, we.
Right.
Would that be donated land to the town?
That's the other thing the development government's not addressing, which development agreement should, it's like, okay, it's an amusement. Is there twenty four seven public access?
Right.
Who the hell cleans it up? It just takes the trash away.
The one, like, the one at one fifteen, right, yeah, the, the pedestrian. Whatever, in terms of, no.
Yeah, we, we did a separate, we did a separate, um. It, it, it easement for that, yeah, that, yeah, that was a separate, that, um.
Well, just something that can be considered at some point.
But this development agreement should, they say that it's gonna be an easement, and it's gonna have twenty four seven public access. And the developer is responsible for. Maintenance and repairs. And then we can work out the details of. In materials and stuff, and some other.
Yeah, yeah, I'm wondering if we could just have a simple sort of reference to. Uh, the, this parcel will be. Um. The developer will agree to an easiness. Overlay this, the parcel of. Um. Uh, this really. Neither that.
Yeah, they should know that you're gonna have to, I guess, yeah, they have to, right, the permanent, right.
And that's the only way to meet, meet the criteria in bylaws.
Yeah, the way the violence is currently, yeah.
So maybe we should add that, that. The review, the developer agrees to the review pavilion. Um, the, the developer, and I'll write this down, if Bob, you can help me, but. The developer. Agrees to a. An easiness. Um, overlaying. The river view pavilion. Right, something like that.
Well, like, I, I just question whether, you know. You're getting into a revival agreement.
And we're commenting on an agreement, we're seeing for the first time.
Yeah. Um. I guess what I, what I'm asking is, is it. You know. Is it necessary to do that? Given you're building a special. Parliament, do you have to define here what you. By ensuring public accessibility, like, can't there be a conversation with you that, that. Probably about, how this, the public accessibility work? You know, is that, is it an easement, is it a ransom, or is it just, you know?
Yeah. I mean.
But would, so, we can step back, the bylaws basically require this. Right?
So we don't even need it. It doesn't even need to be here, because it's required, okay?
Something is required, but, but bylaws require it, so. Required as publicly accessible.
Well, for bylaws require. A donation of land or money. That's what the bylaw.
You're talking about for the, for the one that, that meets the open space.
Don't they have land or money to acquire, that's what the bylaw would want. And we've been saying, you know what, you can do an easement. And that counts as giving us land.
But that's something that we have the authority to establish during special permit. Well, I think the advantage to easement, if I'm, I mean, I could be wrong in this, but I think the advantage to the easement is that. The applicant retains i- i- the ownership. And we're. But we're we're discussing what's, you know, if there's any language you want to add. To this now, not not necessarily whether. That that is, anyway, I think. The benefits of that, but. Are are going to be agreement that we already have the authority to establish this during the special permits?
Yes, but I would include the wording if the point of this is to inform the developer. Of expectations.
Okay, well.
I mean, it's my cost money, so it needs to go into their original cost estimate. Cause there's this weird global cost estimate provision at the very end. So they have to know everything upfront, apparently. And they have to know that they're on the hook for maintaining and repairing it. And cleaning it and. Forever. And that's a cost they have to give them to their financing. It shouldn't be a big one since it goes to cafe, so. You might clean that one.
And we should have listed on this.
Now. I have two other related comments about this pavilion. One is. Have we like, you know, something like a drone to see what the view is? Because if you look at their pictures. And they have a nice little picture of. Mother and child walking along the pavilion. You look out and all the trees in public pavilion have no weeds on them. All the trees across the river do. So. This pavilion is just gonna be in front of a bunch of trees. There's nothing to view. So are we saying, oh, well, yes, we have to cut down all these trees along the river in order to put in this viewpoint? And I don't really want to commit us to that.
Well, I don't know if we're committing to that and think the developers committing to the pavilion and generally speaking, the location as shown. And if they were to have to remove trees to make it pavilion-like, wouldn't they? We would. We would have then replace those trees or something similar someplace.
Well, I don't think these trees are harsh. These are conservation.
Yeah. Just side with.
That is true. So Conservation Commission. Have they weighed in on this thing and said, sure, cut down the trees?
I don't think they're gonna cut down the trees.
So it's another point of. It's just a little too soon to be. Decided.
I think it's too soon for the developer. I don't know if it's too soon. And this particular point, I'm not sure it's too soon for us. Cause we're holding them. We have a DA that's holding them to a. Minimum standard here that what our expectation, they need to figure out those details and if they haven't. Prior deciding this, that's on them. Started off.
So then Drew, we we stood on the sign. And we observed the river from where the platform. And Julia was present as well. And you you know, you you can't keep cutting down trees along the. Riverfront area. You know, that would be an alteration that. Would they're not gonna permit. But at least they need a permit to get it. It's not likely we need to take down the trees.
So when you're. On or twelve feet the air there, can you see through a tree?
You can see the river in trees to that location.
You were at the correct height? You were at the correct height?
Yeah, like well.
Because this thing's on. Hills.
Yeah, um.
If he was standing here, right, then it's. You can see it from here, then you can see from.
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, it's the same.
It has to see a picture from, you know, send up a drawing, right?
It's the same thing as with the um co-op, right? They have a deck in back that overlooks the river. We're just adjacent to the river, so we're assuming it's.
Well, they got permission to cut down.
Yes, but they're replacing it with. Native.
Better tree.
Yeah, better, yeah. But anyway.
I'm just saying, I may be perfectly fine here. It's just that. You know, cons comm with me this time and say, well, you know what, then you gotta put a bunch of trees over.
I mean, it does say and upon an agreed upon by the conservation officials in. Yeah. State federal regs, so like. I mean, that's all regardless of that's in the year or not, that all has to occur anyways.
Great.
So I I again, I don't. I don't see what I when I've been looking at this, I don't see much risk. From from the town's point of view.
I just don't see much reason.
I'm not gonna comment on this, but I don't see. I don't see risk. Six, number four, number six, I don't really see risk. Number five, I I like the addition of the minimum. I think that clarifies the intent. Um again, I don't see much risk. So what we can do is see if we can add some language. That says about um just so that there the expectation is known. That's an easement or some type of other. Um mechanism to allow for public accessibility. To be, yeah.
I got that.
And, you know, something just to that references that public accessibility in terms of some type of legal binding.
I think.
Yes, I got that. I the one thing before you go, I I just. I was still confused on that one bit that Bob had mentioned about the ten that. Was that supposed to something I was supposed to add in?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, all right. All we wanna do is say.
Okay. Minimum.
Right, I got minimum. I got that one, okay. Just to clarify the intent here.
Okay.
All right, number three, the developments.
Well, one and six, oh, do we need some text on responsibility for maintenance and repair? Or is that's cause I'm not quite sure that's within the charge of planning board. Thing they have to put a thing here?
That would be sort of the right language on they own it.
No, he's mentioning.
So you wanna.
Physical boundary, it's not the thing.
You wanna reference that the developer will also provide. Maintenance. If it goes in.
Yes, we'll we'll keep the pavilion well maintained and in good repair at all times. Something like that. Like don't, you know, the town council is, you know. Caught in the line between what planning board can responsibilities are and what the DA is.
What's the like?
Sure, that's.
What's the alternative to that? It would be a donation of the land. To the town at that point, they build pavilion.
They could do that and then we'd have to give them an easement. To the cafe.
Sure.
And if actually if they donated the tent, the land, they would not be able to build as many units because this number of units is based on. Size of the property.
So they would have to divide on that regardless.
Wow, look at that. I didn't remember that.
Uh huh. The ease and then there's the ease.
DPW is doing.
Yeah, no, they didn't want, yeah, they didn't want.
Yeah, cause it's right in.
Right, yeah.
Same, I mean.
And then here's the easement. Thing here, which we use. This was in the development agreement for one fifteen. And.
That's in the DA or the?
This is a DA.
On the permit.
DA. We in the permit, we said that we're gonna. We um. And um. Well, this is about construction of it, a lot of it and and, you know, we.
This seems.
But but in general, it gives us it gives us what we want for boarding and stuff.
So there'll there'll have to be a new development agreement for that, so.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we I think what we do is. I mean, you could have a DA just for the pavilion once it's constructed. You could have a condition on your special permit that said this is c- contingent upon a maintenance plan agreed to by DPW and the developer. I mean, I just do that and say it, we're not, the first thing, I mean. The first thing anybody's gonna say in DPW is who's making that? We're not gonna. And again, I look at this and I'm not in in these items, I'm not seeing any obligations from the town. So number five, number six. Number, so and actually any of these. None none of these list obligation to the town. They only list minimum obligations that are required by the developer. And it does not. It does not put put a limitation on their obligations because they're required to meet all special permits. Cons comm regulations.
I I concur, but because. This development agreement requires them to put together a cost. Estimate for the project before submitting the plan. Then. We should make known to them that they're gonna have the cost of an easement, they're gonna have the cost of. Food, liquor in perpetuity.
Okay, so so Bill, that I think that's a good way to frame this. That the planning board has some updates to the DA. And when we're and it's, this is our advice so that it helps them meet. Uh the more accurate cost estimates as part of their. So we we're gonna. Does that make sense?
I I.
This is, I'm not adding language here. I'm just saying, generally speaking, when. I think we should. The the what we're doing is adding some language so that. It's clear to the developer what the obligations are. So that. They can understand. Project scope better. Based not based on our intentions as a point of work, based solely on the breaks. So for for number six. We could have some type of reference to. Uh and that the developer will be responsible for maintenance and perpetuity. And that some type of public public access mechanism is isn't is required. Such as an easement or something else. Is it too long of a night for you, Bill?
I think it's, yeah, uh yeah, I think it's fine. I I uh. Yeah. The purpose of the easement. Is to allow the public access to the private property. The private property. Is that still is remaining private property, though. So private property is it's the responsibility of the. Advocate to maintain. I I I would put it in. You know, for sure, but but I I think that that um. I think that's the difference with me, you know, you 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 you're not saying. We're gonna come on your land and maintain it. No, no, you're not applying that.
But that one said that.
No, that one, that one's different. That was specific.
I know, but I'm just saying it.
Yeah.
It seems logical to me, but at the same time, that one is a project adjacent to the river. It's a publicly accessible. Passive recreation and the DPW is making.
They want to make they they don't want, yeah, that's right, yeah.
I know, and that's fine, but yeah.
That's at our pur- that's at the town's purview as we're working through special permit.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that was but that's specifically called out, you know, in. We had that language in here, I would be concerned because then that's an obligation.
Yes.
That the town is agreeing to. But I'm not opposed to the op- this is the option. We go to number three. I really really want to. So uh you can read here uh. The development shell consists of a multi-family mixed. Used projects. Yes, I know, multi-family. Twenty eight units. Seven portable and then some square footers just laid out. For a few different of the elements. And then something to do with minimal bike racks.
And all this, which we wouldn't necessarily care about. And finding right here, right, is what this blackboard wants. This is what they want to see. This is what's given them.
A minimum established. Standards.
Yeah, feeling better about doing the HCA.
At the HCA, I just got a text, by the way, just uh we understand the HCA was approved. That the select board has approved that. They didn't approve the. They haven't signed, they haven't executed the law agreement.
I thought they did.
The HCA is signed.
And now they signed. They signed it.
Signed it.
I was on the meeting.
They um. It hasn't been executed yet. Oh, it's not. Oh, well, it hasn't been executed.
Right.
They have. Yeah, right, they were through. The HCA is is that they've signed.
Uh it's the HCA contingent on the development. This development.
That would be.
Otherwise, I'd be, otherwise, we're done. Yeah, I know.
I I might design. And present.
That's a big old majority part of the board.
That would better be, is the point of this. HCA expansion.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so this really is to provide sort of gentle guidelines standards. So that the select would understand what the sort of trade is, yeah. So I again, I'm looking at this from the town's obligations and I'm not seeing. The only obligation I see is. That's it. That we're saying. That marijuana post-remuneration agreement can reside in the state.
Hey, yeah.
And it may, but it's interesting, that's its own separate special.
Yeah. But we have our own special, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's the second special.
Yeah, compared to that, that's on just.
How many times?
That's that's right, yeah, cause this project is just building a warehouse.
Right.
And whether it's occupied by a pot shop is. So we're not. But it does, we're not approving a marijuana operation from site now.
So. But we're saying they, right?
The they and then.
But I mean, they're like, okay. Okay. No, 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 it says it says that in the development agreement, it says that there are. Other permits, this doesn't.
Not with any other permits. I I can go back and forth with this script. What did you know, do this by their treatment was maximum, I just whatever, every listen, no. We're not, we're not offering.
I measured this, it's more like three twenty. Show.
Oh, really?
Yes. So that's that's fine, but I I wonder. Are we constrained anything by the. Retail and commercial sizes? You know, cause they pack like you can make it. More restricted, but sometimes you're saying that these are minimums. You know. Is it clear that the retail can end up a thousand thirty?
Oh.
Well, no, don't we have a, it didn't be, I was right that part there. Maybe what's the legal definition of a proxy?
Wait a minute. Hold on, I'll tell you about, we're not gonna hold you to. Any of this, but like generally speaking. We heard the council buys us, right? You can make things more restrictive. When it comes to approximately three thousand square feet. What would be, what would be more restrictive in that sense?
Figures.
Um so. If you, I I, you know, the way that items changes was. Uh you know, you would have. With commercial space on the biggest floor. And baseline, you know, actually, the concept of what it was, that's. That's the approximately range of the square footage. And also bother. That's the impossible square footage, well. All that moment I talked to you is absolutely commercial, that's the detail in the restaurant. And it doesn't say anything about square footage is strong in relationship. And so. And so. But but if you look at it, that residential zone going.
So our current, the 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 we just did this uh, last year for. Um, DOD mixed use, here's how we worded it for what are. Our uh, changes to by law. For mixed-use projects in the DOD, a majority of space on the ground floor, more than fifty percent shall be for retail, restaurant, office. And or medical office use unless other non-residential uses are authorized by the planning board. Non-residential space excluding parking areas on the ground floor must equal to at least fifteen percent. Of the total occupied space in that building and consists of a minimum of two thousand square feet. Areas designated for motor vehicle parking and circulation that is located under upper level occupied building space. Shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the building footprint. And 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 so that we. We're saying right there, you can't have under two thousand square feet.
Well, but we're not, we don't even know if it meets the fifteen percent.
Well, but it was, but it but to be. To to be approvable, to be approvable under our own regulations, it tells you what.
To my point, you know. The number may change. Can it change, can that number change, like?
The point is, the point is that it the bylaws do not allow. For a bait and switch with that sort of thing.
But what what if it needed to be? Six thousand square feet to meet the fifteen percent.
We would need to then go back and modify this DA and the select board, the planning board and the developer.
Yeah, alright.
Right? I again. I don't see any obligations that 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 meaning is the planning board may or may not.
Well, I think we have a uh, chance to. Get rid of one thing that will have to change. And that's on A. It says approximately three thousand square feet on fifteen hundred square feet footprint of retail restaurant. But we actually have two separate retail areas, there's a retail area of parking powder. While level, and then there's a multi-level restaurant. So I think we really just don't want the reference to the foot. We just wanna say give us three thousand square feet. Cuz. They cannot. Meet that footprint. Then. With those two separate retail locations.
Yeah, I think their intent was. Not counting the second retail, the second location we're talking about.
Right, I forgot.
Yeah, that's all.
So, but I would just strike the footprint reference and then said, give us three thousand four two retail restaurant. I don't know that we care if the stuff on powder mill is a restaurant also, what whatever, that's fine, too, like my one. I just want three thousand square feet.
Um, I can't argue that.
I mean, B meets, you know, that's for current disaster, we got two levels for hours.
Right.
And then we got permission from the constable to build on this.
So I mean, it it doesn't. It it takes away a limitation on them, I guess. So I don't think.
Now, yeah, striking, we're suggesting on um. Three A.
I just breaking the.
It basically the intent here was one part of the development. Whereas the words retail restaurant should include that second. Um, the the second sort of restaurant towards the river. And it I that was not the intent of A. But when you read retail restaurant, it should.
That's a good point, so. So you guys, right, so are they, is there a reference to the stuff on powder mill at all in here? Or is the three thousand the cafe?
That was not the intent.
Three thousand is both, right?
For the year. And and here. On the ground floor.
On the ground. But I'm looking at the footprint of the cafe.
I thought it might.
Might be three thousand if it's.
I I thought it was on, I thought it was on the gentleman's seat on the college side. Wasn't bad. That that's what the intention was here.
Oh, that was the powder mill.
I thought that's what it was all about. So not whatever that, we'll just call it the cafe, I don't think there's references cafe at all. Yeah, I I believe. From my, from my recollection of the intent.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I think it's like that and that. So like, yeah, there and there. Was the fifteen hundred. Again, it's not restrictive on us, it's 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 providing a standard. That ties to me, yeah.
So we can go. Alright, so if it ends with five thousand or one thousand, that's.
Approximately.
So what do you want me to change on this?
I don't know.
Three A and B. I'm just getting rid of this footprint. Or certainly that, cuz that.
Would say approximately three, three thousand square feet. Of retail restaurant.
Right, that's what I have on the first one, okay. Okay, alright, then then strike that, okay.
Work, you can just do it on the second one, too, it doesn't change how we're going to look at this.
Um, I would do that except for the fact that the constable can hold this base on.
Especially because, I mean, the select board expressed concern over the location of a where, you know, there being a warehouse here period. So I think defining it as fifteen hundred square foot. I don't know, I think it.
And my my big comment is on the on the. Overall site plan. Cuz when I look at, you know, what all those elements are shown and I look at. At this picture. Going on a parking lot. All we have is two acres of pavement. We don't have any setbacks, we don't have any buffers, we don't have any landscaping. And worst thing is we've replaced. Retail frontage on Waltzam Creek with a parking lot, which is totally against the. Um, so. I'm just concerned that, you know, having these pictures in this development agreement. We're kind of saying that's kind of like.
This 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 is the concept plan that's attached to the DRA. I mean, I look at this and go, I don't care what the concept plan attached to the years, once we look at this from the starting terms. That's our job, we're gonna start determining. Right, but I get it. Get what you're saying.
Say things like, you know, like, either it's fine, there's party there because you're giving it a billion or.
And I maybe, you know.
I mean, it has to, it has to have a buffer, it has to have landscape thing, it has to have setback in. Turning Waltzam Street into a parking lot instead of a building is.
That's not, that's not what we're doing.
It's it's it's. It's one perspective, and when you look at the over overhead view of this. If Bill and Trentos correct that a storefront building is removed and parking spaces are added there. I I don't know if that takes into account the the whole sort of project itself, but when you look at it. Simplicity simply from from that point of view, it's correct. Now. And this is. I I. This was my one discomfort about this DA was was the the specificing of. Some site plan concepts.
I would be okay if like. More okay, but the first page was included, the second one. Yeah, the first one just says this kind of buildings in, there aren't showing anything else, and the other stuff could be anything. But this is like, well, right, it's signed the agreement, and this is essentially what we're given, you know, and why are you objecting now? So I would, I would really like this, that herth work going to go away.
And we we can do that because there was never discussion exactly what plans were.
Just keep the first page.
The first page and everything else is.
Again, there was never a discussion about what specific. Figures we can add as a concept, right, so we can, we can, we can. Give the first pass of that and say. We like, so the first page is really like his concept, and to me, I look at this, this isn't concept anymore. This that's not concept, having a parking lot configuration is not concept, right?
We removed the, you know, I think that. We removed that from the development agreement, play all references to parking, I mean, clearly, the the then it's. The SPGA's purview. Nobody's saying that you're you're approving parking states here, maybe you are, the parking is a funny thing, because it, you know, like I said, I don't know how ultimately shake out. I'm certain that, you know, the buffers and landscape and all that stuff is not gonna just be.
Here here's how the parking conversation originated, the Albro was saying that. They. You know, there's site limitations. And my comment to them was in the past, the planning board has. Been fine with reducing parking. For other projects, I am not, this project, I'm saying is that. You know. The this particular planning board and previous planning boards has. Waiver. The parking requirement, so take that to as you will, they came up with the forty-two space number, I said, that sounds. Reasonable for the size. And that's why I wanted the concept of in the project, the project scales, these other sort of considerations can scale with it. We took out the parking. Whatever, I guess it was all irrelevant anyways, we're not gonna have a parking, we're in here, I don't need a parking. There's no reference to parking, and there's no reference to these figures in in the actual test, so.
Um, well, there has to be a reference to the attachment.
Right, but if we. We, if if the attachment has the attachment has not finalized.
Right, so. Yeah, I I think. I I'm I'm fine with the first page on, everything else.
Did I make that in our comments? I find everything else to to be more than concept and to to be restrictive to the project, which I don't find necessary. Does that make sense, Bill?
But I do. Wonder a lot.
I can go with me and discuss that. I think it's something we will discuss. For any project. So, yeah, discuss it during special part.
Yeah, but I guess that. The first page.
Okay. I again, these were minimum numbers, I think this, I I think the. Select word wanted. It did, so the language I added was that, or similar combinations to support a mix of transportation alternatives and plans for the complete street. That's right, that's the language I want. On that. It well, but um, wasn't plans on compliance with our complete streets policy as part of the.
Yes, but that would include. That's pedestrian bicycle and. In the trend of the combination. Really on the streets.
Right. Well, and and connection, of course.
Yeah.
But we can, we can discuss it in. And again, it's it's such a minimum standard for the developers. Number four, necessary upgrades, these are upgrades that are basically regurgitated from our. Our regulations down there. Of underground utilities and things of that nature. It does get into more specifics about improvements that. We would like to generally see. At that corner, if if any developer was doing the building. This this came with input from. From town engineer and GPW.
Is this, is this just this corner?
This is basically getting that higher corner. Uh, to be upgraded in compliance. Um, the development across this region of Donald Development did some improvements many years ago. And this would, from my understanding, finish off that corner, provide a whole set of improvements. On all, so at that point, it this this DA does not touch all four corners, but touches the remaining one. That's the idea, so we we will have a compliant point. From the ADA and traffic. That's right, sorry.
No, sorry.
Yes, totally right. The 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 goal was that to outline what would be required to have a compliant.
Nicely done.
The subsection four. Include the. Sidewalk touching the.
Um, by the same, which is it does not.
Well, they.
Well, if it didn't say. Adjacent to the site development, if it just said from the Waltzam Street Bridge. To the beach we limit, then it wouldn't.
Guess it would have to, how you, how do you read Jason? And we'll probably talk. Four, six concrete panels.
And we're not, I mean.
I don't have, I don't have an answer.
I mean, I think the intent is the whole thing, but I.
That's something. At the pre-application meeting, and just, you know, when we're asking for what kind of um, graphics and so on, that would be. We would wanna see, I would think that off-site improvements would be something we'd wanna see, and and this is what has to be.
I feel like this language applied that. From the edge of the Waltzam Street Bridge to the easterly limit of the project site, the easterly limit of the project, I think that we're here. Two.
I mean, around the site. If I was playing games with the um, the escape clause at the end and the the costing, I'd be like, oh, that's an unexpected cost. Well, twenty-five percent, I'm out of here. Do that.
That is, that's my mission definitely. You could, you could just strike it, Jason.
For the long side.
All existing concrete sidewalk. From the edge of the Waltzam Waltzam Street Bridge to the easterly limit of the project site.
No.
Maybe.
So, yeah. Yeah, we look at, you know, people are here, oh, we have the process stream, no, I didn't intend to say that, yeah.
Well, we can also discuss it in special permit and we can add that, so again, this is.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, Bill, if you, I mean, if that's on your radar to management, the pre-application meeting.
Alright, so. It, it references that design plans will be prepared by professional engineers, it's all stuff that has to have to drive this. And that's wonderful. Number five, no guarantees, I don't think this is a next section review. But it actually says that. Now, all terminated by the town shall be conducted according to prescribed rules and regulations and statute. This is, this is obviously more. Surety was a point of contention, specifically the number, it looks like it settled at $1,000.
So this section, I'm. I'm certain that it does not guarantee the intent. And it could well lead to a big switch, unintentional one. Cause I read this as. If they don't develop the whole thing for the five years, they owe us $300,000. Doesn't say, well, you know what? You could just build a pot shop. And nothing else, not even take down the old crappy buildings, and after five years, give us 300,000 and you would need development. At the very least, I want something saying, I don't care to just build a cafe, but take down the old buildings and stabilize the site, make the cycle. But this doesn't seem to give us the guarantee that we're invisible. Frankly, if I had a cannabis. If it was three million. But I also get word that. The old buildings won't come down.
It does say, you know, get it understood by the parties that the entire project must be completed generally as presented, and has been memorialized in this agreement to be considered compliant.
Yeah.
Generally as presented would not be just the pot shop.
I mean.
Then they would be in violation of the, so if they don't do the whole. Agreement, they would be in violation of this DA, and therefore they'd be in violation of the HCA.
It'd be a silver suit.
Yeah, it'd be silver suit, whatever, I think, but honestly, maybe, maybe Bill, we just get clarification that this does provide the protection we need, I don't know.
It seems like you did still part of it, pay 300,000.
I think you're right, except for the language. Generally as presented, in wise, and theories of building, not one warehouse.
This is beyond, I think, planning board scope, but I think we would, we would want. Bill, we could just get Liz to, just, just to tell us. That number six surety does hold the developer to develop the whole project. Itself.
Not just part of it, and then give us 300,000 dollars in five years.
That makes sense, Joe, and not, what would 300,000 cost?
To make sure that this means that they have to build the entire project and not just build the warehouse.
Right.
And give us 300,000 dollars in five years, and these, you know, in security.
In other words.
Yeah.
The 300,000 dollars is liquidated damages for not building the project.
Right.
You still, they could still be enjoying and ready to. Complete the entire project. And interestingly, it talks about reducing the amount of that bond as they build some stuff. Really, we don't even get 300, we get less than that if you reduce the amount. Yeah. But, I mean, the other.
I mean, the amount of reduction of any shall be determined by a vote of the SPGA or stuff.
Yeah, that, that's fine, but. So it's implying that it would be a stage. But, yeah, check, check whether that really guarantees what we think, but I'm also concerned about the sequencing of the demolition of the old. Um, cause I would wanna tag that to. You know, first building. Not sure I really want the cafe and. And the warehouse. Run each of the five years before anything is done with the other part.
Well, it does say that. Within five years, that I, my view of this is that within five years, the project must be concluded.
Right, so we're okay with the lots up standing for five years? Four and a half year?
They, they did say that they have a phased approach to this.
Yeah.
Which I said, okay, but I, and that's why you put in the five year number. Because they, they offered that they have a phased approach to this, you know.
Okay, well, maybe that's a. That's a special permit discussion.
It definitely is.
I really don't wanna see the. I need it, I need it now before getting. Yeah, maybe that's the intent, but I don't see it guaranteed.
I don't, I don't think, yeah, we don't know the intent because we didn't get into that, I don't recall getting that. Alright, seven inspection. Eight dispute resolution, I don't think that's pointing the, this point, nine notices.
So the notices, that lawyer guy, he's the lawyer for the. Late show, the lawyer for the podcast.
Well, that was a little convoluted.
He represents himself for the podcast.
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Does not, these are not items that, from my point of view. I don't feel responsible for these items. And we can discuss in the view. But it's not, these are not items that. Discussing planning, planning board, so. Relativity, can we know what fourteen? What can we just, or, I'm sorry. What's this, which one, Bill, fourteen, fourteen, is it?
Yeah.
Just register.
That's it, you have to go to registry deeds. We have to write a notice that we do for review.
They, uh, we've had a long story, but yeah, it's.
Never mind.
I mean, all of this stuff, I don't.
Yeah. Construction is not our version of construction.
Right.
Yes, let's look at seventeen, the construction terms and provisions of the agreement, results from negotiations between parties. So this is, yes. This is construction of the agreement.
And then there's sports major. Labor dispute and quarantine.
And it goes on and on.
It really does.
I like point four, a lot of that is smaller. Not a terror, active terror, including but not limited to bioterrorism or eco-terrorism. I could only guess it would be polluting water system, maybe, water, like that.
Not native moth species. Could they activate to bring in the site forever?
It would, alright, um, you, you, you guys welcome to take a moment to consider looking to rest, none of it, I, I commented on during our. During sessions.
I like twenty-seven, so that's good.
Oh, seven is.
Yes, that would be one.
If you will, they fix the signature pages, they all reference the wrong parties. First one, Adam, it's great. But then the select word references Adam, where references this likely.
Please, that should probably be fixed.
Yeah.
And, oh, and Adam's there? Yeah, that would be awkward.
Um, so, so Bill, I'm happy to run through these comments, um, tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
And just, just to.
It's good, yeah.
Tomorrow, and we won't, we don't need to run through them again.
No, I can, what I can do, I can say.
Point on my notes, so you and I can, can figure that out, and. And then, um.
Um, I have one question before we, we, uh, about this, so, um, I've scheduled a pre-application meeting for the sixty, sixteen. To discuss this, uh, and I was wondering if I could get, I'd like to have. One of the board there, if anybody's available, it's at ten in the morning, I think. Um, the purpose of pre-app is basically, um.
Can we come now?
Wait. Sixteen, yeah, a week from now. It's, I, I put it as tentative, but I knew we wanted to, I didn't know what would happen tonight, so I wanna get on, you know, out there, so I got. On Tuesday, it's basically my deal, but if, um. I, I can do it if you want, I promise I'll be good, I like the things I need. Probably do. I mean, whoever wants to come, but it's somebody at least.
Obviously, some lessons, but.
So there's very important.
What is the intent?
Yes, but if we're gonna have more than two there. We would have a, um, we want, we all have a meeting. I got one or two.
Right. I can't do ten, um, I have to. I'll give, I want to actually. On the con and GPW members. Cause we gotta go, get up a lot of utilities. We already had a hard conversation, we're just finalizing.
Um, for our next planning board meeting, um. We have a, quite a week, two weeks from now. But we, I mean, we don't. Meeting, oh, on that stuff. But are we gonna, we're planning a meeting, we don't have any held hearings on any agenda, we have, we have a, the. We have zoning board special meeting on Sunday. Monday and the zoning board special meeting Wednesday. So if we are gonna meet in between, it's fine, if you don't wanna meet, we'll bury it in the heart.
So remind me, are we trying to hit maybe for any violations? Are we trying to put forward amendments to some violations?
Nicely.
For the fall, for the fall town meeting, are we trying to?
Okay, I can't make the nail.
Okay, so there's no, there's no rush.
No, there, 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 I can't do it. But we have to let, you know, this again, you can get a firm calendar. Yeah, or I think, yeah. Spring time meeting, we can pretty, yeah. Yeah. Uh, would be.
Wouldn't you want time to review this development again? During our next skating meeting, perhaps, I don't know, maybe something you wanna review.
Well, I thought, it would not be at this time, I'm just saying, if, I wouldn't be for the heck of it, I mean, we can, I, okay.
Will we have the governmental quartering? Um, is there anything we can discuss for that?
Yes, yes, and yes, yeah, you guys got it, it's on the, I sent it on your, um, social correspondence night, or on the, uh. For docs, all our stuff came into that, you know, all my isn't, and that's, and, uh, we have their kickoff meeting tomorrow.
Are you, is there something that would be available for us to review or to participate in?
I'll find it on the, we, you can, I'm fine with.
With the goal, giving their shortening seven to eight. Right, next year, and then, um, have a timely schedule for seven to eight. Uh, drinks afterward on bill, and I see, um, so.
Well, I have a turn of, but always.
And then, you know, if, if there's not much happening here. Then.
There, yeah, whatever's, I, this is the top, right, obviously. And I don't want to, you know, give the. Don't think twice, we're not going to. And, um, what, what I'll do, Chris, I'll put this together tomorrow with a, with a. Set up a conversation, you, the email conversation, you, both points.
And, and in my notes now, yeah, my goal would be make sure that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, it's pretty good, we got some good stuff, we got a half dozen. One, one bad one.
Any other updates still?
Um, well, you got the, the powder nose and thing, that's, that's going, and this, it's our baby, but. So it'll be that, we got everything we wanted in that, and, and, um. It's, that's probably, you know, it's probably just as well that we don't have the, um, zoning violence until. Bring, I'm afraid we'd be. Want to be good. But, um, no, I have a lot more information tomorrow, tomorrow's a kick-off meeting, and so are you, you're invited. And anybody, um, I'm gonna send you, I meant to do it today, but then. Anybody wants to come? You're welcome, come in, I, I can, I can just forward you guys in, but. Everybody wants to, it's a zoomer.
It's tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow. It's at ten. It is tomorrow, our kickoff, uh. Oh. Eleven, not ten, it's eleven tomorrow.
And it's a, so you mean?
Yeah.
We have a few, some of the link, I should.
I'm gonna forward you, I've started all of it.
Yeah.
And if you, i- it's, um, you might have, it's not my zone, it's M A P C, so you might have to, you know, jump through a few hoops, but you can. Chris, you're already invited, right?
Yeah. Alright, Jimmy, you wanna do the honors?
I'll be like, oh, I just have one question to ask, so, well, on this, the agreement to, uh. The marijuana, is that pegged just for this location?
Yes. And, and, um. The, the, the host community.
I'm curious that.
You mean like that late location within the, in the complex?
Right here.
It's for an, an address, and I don't know what the HCA has as an address, but the, our council confirmed that. It's specific to a site address.
I, I'm just curious, and it's, it is curiosity. These, I would think that these people would like to get going quickly, and you're looking at at least a year and a half before this project. Gets to the point where they can start doing something. It seems like a long wait, a long time to wait for something that was. If it were me, I would wanna kickoff immediately, so. This just seems like a. I'm just curious, I'm just asking for it, it's, it's, it's a bit curious. I will be happy to, uh, accommodate to, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, close this meeting.
Thanks, Jimmy, second, the motion on favor, close again. Five zero, closing, thank you, everybody, um, Bill, would you mind stopping to report?
Yes, everyone, good, good stuff. Remember what?
No, the PC is closed for about one month of August. Yeah, everybody, everybody, you know.